How's he doing? You want to say, "How's he doing?"
Uh, he's doing good, but he's got, uh, his white cells are down, so he can't be able to anybody that's sick. That's one reason I have to deal with him, because I know it's cold and I can't. Right now, the immune system is...
Uh, I don't know. See what Mike says. Should we wait for Ed to put that down? What is this?
He's got his card.
Oh.
I got my card, so.
He's home now.
He came back and told me that he had a liver issue.
I knew, I knew he was going to go back. Realizing he's from a place besides him, or he could do it either way, somewhere else.
Okay. After the wrestling.
I think this, uh, just before it happened.
Just before, okay.
Then the mayor can issue a proclamation.
Yeah.
Sure. You can do it.
Are you gonna call? Understatement.
Okay, did you sign that, Mike?
Did I? Not yet.
Okay.
But I will.
Can't have anybody visit him, because right now, he's got an infection, uh, white cells down, so his immune system is...
Okay.
So, in case anybody was thinking about. They're supposed to be with Carol.
Carol's not here.
I saw Carol.
She was at the other meeting, she wasn't here.
She's the one. Jennifer, I just wanted to say.
No, she's on the edge of the...
Make a brief presentation. They told me that they were gonna do it, and that's why they want to be on first.
Hopefully, they're here.
Okay, I saw both. Carol's on her way out. So, let me check.
Are we all set?
Yep.
Please raise your pledge of flag. Uh?
Uh-oh.
Where's the flag?
Down there.
Where's the flag?
We need a flag.
Okay, which one of the wrestlers has the flag? Oh, you're on me. I'm gonna keep you on me. There it is.
Referee, ready?
I want you to lead this to the flag. The United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being God's son and daughter.
Clerk, call the role.
Mayor Stamford.
Here.
Alman Weston.
Here.
Alman Cavalero.
Here.
Alman Thompson is here.
He's here.
Alman Thompson. Alman Woodward.
Here.
City Attorney David Hawthorne. All present, your honor, except for First Ward and Second Ward.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity just to, uh, thank everybody for attending tonight, and to apologize for the condition of, uh, the space we have to use this evening. As you can well imagine, it's under renovation, and, uh, we'll just have to work through this the best we can. Hopefully, by the next meeting, or maybe the one after that, uh, this will all be, uh, put back in place. The, uh, State Unified Court System, uh, is the one that is funding the renovations on this space, and, uh, when the court system says they want to fix something, uh, it's hard to argue with them. First on the agenda, we have a presentation from the Oswego County Planning and Community Development, Oswego River Canal Corridor Brownfield Assessment Grant Application.
My name is Donna Scamman, and this is Oswego County Department of Planning and Community Development. Uh, I'm just gonna take a few simple examples of what we're doing, and... Okay, um, I'm with the Oswego County Department of Planning and Community Development, and we're working on a brownfield assessment grant. We're applying to the Environmental Protection Agency, and this is a federal grant, and the area that we're looking at receiving funding for is the Canal Corridor, which takes in from the city of Oswego all the way to Three Rivers and, and Phoenix. So, anywhere in that area, and I brought with me tonight Lorraine McMurray-Broyle, and she's our consultant, and she's helping us. Actually, she's preparing the grant, she's doing most of the work, which I think is wonderful. So, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to her, but the county is the one that's applying for this, and we're doing that with funding we received from a previous grant application for the Minneto area, so we've taken some money from that, and we've been able to hire a consultant, and hopefully be successful in our next round of funding with, uh, EPA. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Lorraine, and she's gonna give you a much more detailed explanation of what we're doing.
I'll try and be brief. I have a tendency to talk fast, so I'm intentionally talking slower than normal. Um, I'm with the Brownfield Restoration Group. Uh, we actually do brownfields for a living, and the first question that usually comes to mind is what exactly is a brownfield? U.S. EPA recently changed the definition as of January 11th of last year. What most people understand is the definition of a brownfield is something that's abandoned or vacant and was formerly an industrial site. EPA decided they were going to modify that a little bit, and it's basically any site that is underutilized and has a perceived environmental problem. Doesn't have to be an actual, it's just somebody has the perception. And this used to be limited to the fact that you had some sort of solvent or a metal type of contamination, usually in the soil, or asbestos, or something along those lines. And it used to exclude all oil and petroleum products. That's another change that they made January, in last January, is that they now allow you to clean up, or at least assess, petroleum products as well, which means anywhere where you've had an underground storage tank for heating oil or gasoline. Those are now eligible, and so corner gas stations are now considered brownfields, and they never used to be. What the county is actually applying for are two grants. The first is for hazardous substances, which are, again, your solvents, your metals, along those lines. The second is for the petroleum only. Each of those is for $200,000, which means if the county gets accepted into the last, or gets the grant on the last round, they'll get up to $400,000 for this. It's a two-year project. What they end up doing is the first round, we submitted an application in December. When we were done with that application, there were over 95 in EPA Region Two alone. EPA Region Two covers New York, New Jersey, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. Still haven't figured out how Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands end up with New York, but that's how they do it. They had over 95 applications, and less than half made it to the next round. You had to be invited to this round. They expect approximately 100 applications from across the country, or 200 applications from across the country, and they will award less than 100 grants. So, pretty decent odds on that. Uh, we did score extremely high on the last round, which is great, because some of your score from the last round comes here. The reason I'm here today is that public participation, even in the application process, is extremely important to the EPA. They want to make sure that the community is involved in all phases, including the application. We have a draft copy of the application that we've put together with just answering some of the yes-no type questions, but we need a little bit of information from the community to finish this, and the application is due on March 19th. EPA will probably let everybody know who's awarded sometime in May. So, first is, what is the corridor? As Donna pointed out, it runs from the lake down to the Three Rivers, and from the two highways on either side of the river. Those are elastic boundaries. The EPA lets you stretch them a little as long as you keep with the intent. I think if we tried to pull Pulaski in, they might get a little upset, a little too far outside the elastic boundaries. The things that they really scored high on for the last one were the fact that you had historical significance in the corridor. You had already started some revitalization products, as far as your industrial zones are concerned. There's the recreation aspect, green space and recreation-type things are something that the EPA, again, looks very highly on. The fact that you had two empire zones in that corridor, again, weighs very highly. It means you have an economic need for this money. They also looked at this type of a grant, $400,000 sounds like a lot of money, and it doesn't go very far when you're dealing with brownfields. So, they want to make sure that you know how to utilize that funding and look for other funding, other grants, other projects that you can build kind of a funding pyramid, so that you actually get a project complete, something that your community really and truly can use. Because this brownfield assessment grant is just that. It allows you to inventory your properties, find out what you have that are brownfields, allows you to figure out which ones are most important to utilize first, and it allows you to actually do environmental assessments on them. Phase-one assessments, you come in and you look at what incidents have happened there in the past, you walk around the property, and a report comes out which says, "Most likely, you do or do not have contamination on this site, and this is what we think it would be." Sites that you expect no contamination, you're done. Realtors love that. "Oh, great, I have something that says there's nothing wrong with this." If there is suspected contamination, it goes to a phase-two, which is where they actually go in and take samples. The grant also covers redevelopment costs for any type of planning, but it does not cover cleanup costs themselves. Now, this is a two-year project, which means if awarded, next year, you could apply for the actual cleanup money that U.S. EPA is now offering. They never used to offer this. This is the first year they're actually giving cleanup money. New York DEC and other agencies also offer money for actual cleanup. Everybody lost now? I have about six or seven questions here that I need for some participation on, to give me some answers, so we can finish up this application. And great participation means I'm done, and you guys get to get on with your meeting. Anybody want to start with how, how do you think brownfields have impacted your community? Now that we understand what technically a brownfield is? I mean, is it, we have a pretty good idea, but I'd like to hear it from you guys.
How do you think it impacts? Well, I think it's good, because it identifies possible problems for development areas. Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
How does someone get on your list to be evaluated? Because we have someone here tonight that talked to me before I come into meeting, they just acquired a piece of property for the hospital, and they know there's contamination on there, and they're right on 41, on the corridor.
Okay. What ends up happening is, if awarded the grant, what the process is, U.S. EPA, in their infinite wisdom, will award the grants, tell you who's won, so you'll know if you're on the list, in May. We, May or June. It's their usual timeframe. Once you know that, you put together a work plan with them. U.S. EPA never finalizes the work plans before September, because they don't want to award the money until October, which is the new fiscal year. Once that happens, the county will work with trying, probably trying to consult and to help them with this, but at that point in time, there'll be probably a number of public meetings where they will be asking for, "Do you have sites in mind..."
Okay.
"...to be inventoried?"
So, it's kind of preliminary for someone to come to you now and say, "I have this site."
Actually, it's not a bad idea to get it on the list now, because it's something we can put into the application that, hey, here's another need.
Would that person see you, or would they see...
Yeah, I have a card, and Donna has a stack of them as well.
Well, he's sitting in the audience back here. He'll get with you, Bruce, get with her after.
So, the list was together by, um, Tom Carroll, um, Jeff Hatt, David Turner, and, uh, Tom, sort of, and that, and recently, they, um...
Drive-by.
Drive-by survey, and then some of the army checked out, and they were, um, that was, we didn't do it with them, but that was...
Just preliminary.
Let everybody else know that there might be more, and, um...
Well, they've done preliminaries. There's been some core samples taken when the property changed hands, and they found some solvents, but they don't know the extent.
Yeah. That's typical, that's, they did a typical phase-two, and they need another phase-two, or sometimes it's called a phase-three, to get a better rate and extent on that. So, I guess, um, answers that this is the third public meeting we've done in two days, so answers that I've heard from other communities are that, for the most part, the fact that there's perceived environmental contamination has scared off developers who might be interested in utilizing those properties. The other thing is that a lot of these have promoted ISOs, which kind of interrupts the nice recreation theme that kind of goes up through the corridor. You know, people boating up the river, and you see this monster sitting on shore, it's not really attractive. So, those are two of the biggest things that we've heard so far. One of the things the EPA is concerned about is making sure that, okay, we've gotten down this process, we're cleaning up brownfield sites as they are. What is the vision for the community to finish cleaning up these sites and make sure that they don't happen again? And that's one of the questions that they want to make sure that we answer in this application.
Well, it depends definitely on what redevelopment would be. If you have a site that's contaminated, you don't want to bring another, get it cleaned up, and bring another, uh, industry in that would recontaminate the site. So, definitely the use of the brownfield would definitely change.
So, land use plans. We had talked about this in one of the earlier meetings, that, uh, obviously, whatever was found may dictate what some of that land use is, and helping you to marry a end-use to what the property currently can handle. Some other things that were, that we've heard were, um, looking at more high-technology-type industries, looking at more, um, commercial or service-type industries to go into some of those areas, and trying to keep the industry in the industrial cores. Does that seem like it goes along with...
Yep.
...what you would think? There are a lot of rules and regulations for who can, who can utilize it. In the inventory process, any property is fair game. And from that, a lot of the things that we discover during the inventory process will tell us if it's eligible for the funding. And they do have certain rules and regulations. It can be privately owned, it can be publicly owned. And that may be something that the county decides to do from a legal standpoint, to award the money to do the cleanup, or actually to assess, to see if it needs to be cleaned up. Right now, they can't utilize it for cleanup, just knowing if it needs it. One of the other questions they have is, what are the sites in your community here that probably you would put highest on your list as a brownfield priority? Is there a particular site in the Fulton community that you'd really like to see...
Fulton terminals.
...addressed?
The Fulton terminals property, Van Buren Park. The Fulton terminals property, Van Buren Park. The Nestle property that just went to the hospital.
Yeah. There's a representative from the hospital here that...
Okay. So, that's the Nestle property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Always deeded to the hospital from Nestle.
Right. Those are some pretty good lists. Not all of them were on ours. Couple of them were. One of the concerns they have is that when people look at, um, in, outside Rochester, Aaron Brockovich has come and visited Brockport, which is just west of Rochester, because of the health concerns of some of the sites there. One of the questions they ask are, "Are there any health concerns associated with some of your brownfield sites?"
Well, there are always concerns until you find out just what is there and the extent of the contamination, but of course, it can be very sensitive to health concerns.
Okay. The next question they ask are sensitive populations. By this, they're not talking about plants and animals, they are concerned about people. And they actually word it, are there significant impacts around these brownfields to minority communities, impoverished communities, elderly, pregnant women? Trust me, in the U.S. Census, there was nothing about pregnant women, we did look that up. But do you feel there are some minority or impoverished centers near some of these brownfields? At least compared to the rest of your community?
Sure. I would say, yeah.
Um, one thing we did find in the census tract is that the only two pockets of minority populations were located in Oswego and Fulton, and those also had the lowest per capita income, or lowest average income, and the highest poverty rate were Oswego and Fulton, according to the latest census, compared to the rest of the county. Not compared to anyplace else, just within the county.
Well, I think why you would see that is people, uh, the families that are on assistance are usually located in the cities due to lack of public transportation in the rural areas.
Exactly. Three more questions, and I'm, and I will yield the floor to whoever's next. How do you see this type of a project affecting your local community, from an economic standpoint?
Probably depends who's gonna do the assessment. Is it usually done by outside firms, or...
That's, that is up to the county and the municipalities that they work with, is how they want to do that.
Like, once you get the grant, you'll hire, somebody would be hired to actually do the assessment, probably be an authorized Syracuse officer. Hey, I guess the answer would be that if no local people are used to do a project, probably no effect.
Well, the results...
Well, the end results.
And results, well, it will definitely have an effect, because if we can, uh, if we have a contaminated site, and we can get the funding to, to remediate, then you have a site that's marketable, and of course, it's going to, uh...
Get it back on the tax rolls.
Sure. Definitely.
Last two questions, um, and we're pretty sure we have an answer on this one, which is that, from a green space standpoint, and kind of brownfields and green spaces kind of go together, because the EPA loves to see things go from brown to green. It's kind of their thing. What in your community is probably a green, green space or, you know, recreational-type application that you can see that this grant would help?
Van Buren Park?
Well, Van Buren Park for a while.
Van Buren Park?
Definitely. We could, uh, expand, uh, the size of the park and the uses of the park, uh, once it was completed.
Wonderful. And then the last question is, what persons, groups, or agencies do you think should be involved in this type of a project? And this is, again, they're looking distinctly for a lot of community participation on this. They want to make sure that the community knows what's happening, and that they have an influence over what's happening.
Clearly, that would be the CDA. Like, clearly, that would be the CDA, from our point of view.
But also getting the information out to, uh, to service clubs.
Service clubs, yes.
That's a good cross-section of the community, to get their input. And public meetings like this to get the information out. I hope you are very successful in the rest of the meetings that you have.
We've, we've been doing quite well, actually.
Good.
So, we're quite pleased. We have two more meetings, one next Monday and one next Thursday. If I remember right. Does anybody have any other questions? In that case?
I'd like to thank you very much for the presentation, and, uh, if anybody, uh, has any, uh, questions, any questions right now?
If you have any, if you think of anything, well, the grant is due on the 19th, uh, we're trying to finish it up within the next week. If anybody thinks of anything to add after this meeting, I have business stuff here, so, and Donna will have staff, so, so, please, get your comment.
I think your sign, your sign-up sheet is right up here.
Thanks, Eddie.
Next on the agenda, before we do the proclamation, you want to...
I think, I think it'll be kind of a change from what we just heard. Got to get my cap on here, Mike. Well, anyways, I wanted to say a few words about the wrestling program. Uh, Fulton is a great sports community, we've got a, a number of outstanding teams, and tonight, we, we plan to recognize one of those teams with the mayor's proclamation. One of the things that you notice as you come to the city of Fulton, the sign that says, "Fulton welcomes you." Well, right next to it is another sign that we're very proud of, which says, "Welcome to Fulton, home of New York State's number-one wrestling team." Now, on this sign, there's 14 stars. So far, eight of those stars have been filled in with years that Fulton was number-one. They've left six that are open, we're certainly going to fill those, and if we need to, we'll get a bigger sign. Certainly, the success of any program is dependent upon a number of support groups, and with the Fulton Wrestling, there's just so many people, so many volunteers, so many coaches, the great support of the parents and of the community in supporting the wrestling program. Some of the people that I've had come tonight, that I see right here, I want to acknowledge, I want them to, I was gonna say stand up, but most of them are already standing. First of all, Coach Connors, the coach of the varsity wrestling team, Mike. Next to him is Tim Moore, who happens to be the junior varsity wrestling coach. Tim, how long have you been coaching? A long time, okay. No, no commitment there. Also in the back there is Tom Eggleston, who is the Director of Health, Education, and Athletics. Next to him is Mike Merritt, who is President of the Fulton Wrestling, uh, Fulton Booster Club, excuse me, got my hat on. And let's see, Dennis Dumas, who is the Acting Principal at G. Ray Vodley High School, and of course, Joe Tormino, who is the Pee-wee and freestyle wrestling coach. Joe is the one that's been working with all the Pee-wee wrestlers for a number of years. So, a number of these people have been dedicated, committed to the wrestling program, and that's what's made it work. How can we explain the fact that... How can we explain the fact that the best wrestlers in central New York come from Fulton? You can imagine the pride that the school has, that the wrestlers have, that the community has, that we have a team like this, a program like this, that we can be extremely proud of. We also happen to have in the audience right now, Josh Levey, who is Section III Champion. He's going to the States, he's practicing this week, so we wish him luck on Friday. Josh, would you like to stand up? So, what I'd like to do is, the mayor's going to read the proclamation, and then I've talked to the press, and they'd like to get some pictures. I know there's quite a few of you, but we're going to try to get, if Andy can do it, we're going to put you on the wall back here. So, after the mayor reads the proclamation, we'll have a picture taken. So, thank you very much, everyone, for coming, you've done a great job for a number of years, and we certainly, uh, thank you for that.
Proclamation of Fulton Raider Wrestlers Week. Whereas Fulton High School has had a long tradition of wrestling victories, records, and championships, and whereas wrestling coach Michael Connors has dedicated himself to the pursuit of excellence in this sport, and has inspired countless young men to also commit to this pursuit, and in doing so, has achieved a milestone 300 victories, a feat which has been achieved by less than 30 wrestling coaches in New York State, and whereas, through dedication, discipline, sportsmanship, and courage, the Fulton Raider Wrestlers have achieved a record 600 dual-meat victories, making them the very first team in New York State to achieve such a record. This is in addition to eight New York State Dual Meat Team Championships, a record five consecutive New York State Dual Meat Team Championships, 14 consecutive Section III Class A Championships, and 21 consecutive Anadaga High School League Championships. And whereas, the wrestling program at Fulton High School has helped to mold Fulton's young men into proud athletes, while also teaching them the lessons of good sportsmanship and fair play, as well as the value of dedication and discipline, attributes that these young men will carry with them into adulthood. Therefore, I, Michael K. Stafford, Mayor of the City of Fulton, New York, in recognition of Coach Connors' outstanding career achievement, and to his team's record-breaking victory putting Fulton first in New York State, do hereby proclaim March 9th through March 15th as Fulton Raider Wrestlers Week, and encourage all citizens of Fulton to give them the recognition and praise they so deserve. To all of you, congratulations, great job.
I might add that if, if Coach Connors, or if any one of the other, Mike Merritt, or any of the other people that would like to say something, or introduce the wrestlers, I think that's certainly appropriate.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone, it's a special honor for our program, and this year's been very special to me. I let you know, we have a wonderful group of young men that have worked with tails like we do every year, and this year is no exception, they've just been outstanding, and I couldn't be prouder of the reference this year. This was a, kind of rebuilding air force, these kids overachieved all year long, and I think, speaking for everyone above the program, we're proud of what our wrestlers do after they leave the city of Fulton, or after they leave our program. We had Cornell graduates all the way to military personnel, we're over and, you know, waiting to go to war in Iraq, so, I mean, we have some tremendous young men, with some tremendous character, and I think that's one of the things we try to instill in our program, is that loyalty and character, and it's carried over to a lot of victories, and again, it's not just myself, it's all these people that are here, and countless others, who have committed to these young men to make them better people. And I'd like to thank you. You want me to introduce the guys that are here?
Sure.
Let's go. Let's keep you one up there for a picture.
That'd be perfect, introduce them, then they can come up for a picture.
Okay. Bernie Ham, Stuart Stevens, Michael Mann, our storekeeper, make your own plans, come on, get up here, don't be shy. Okay, Dylan Shute, only an eighth grader, brother Tyler Shute, senior, William Hudson, Zach Bogartis, Josh Levey, we mentioned earlier, Ed Parkers, Dan Moll, Eric Merritt, Marcus Coramina, Charlie Heath and Barker, and my Latino connection, where are they, Ernesto and Matias Carrasino, get up here. Oh, Derek Bartlett, should have you get up here and speak before last. And, uh, a bunch of you guys are all part of the program, parents, get up here for a picture too, yeah, let's come out, or the barrier, I mean, everyone's involved in, uh,
everybody involved in the program.
Yes, let's go. Tyler, he was the athletic director, get him up, I work for a great man, makes my job a lot easier.
You guys, um, you guys, 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 you[1485.13]
We have held approximately ninety blood drives, collected forty-four hundred pints of blood, used eight hundred and seventeen volunteer hours to man those blood drives because we do provide all the volunteers for all the blood drives held in Oswego County. We do that in our office in Oswego. We provide those folks. It's a huge job in itself. This year, we've also spent fifty-seven thousand dollars in direct assistance to fire clients. Thirty-four percent of those fire clients were from Oswego and Fulton. The rest of them are throughout, dispersed throughout, uh, the county. When I first took over, we spent maybe twenty-one thousand dollars a year in disaster assistance. But because of the wonderful publicity we've gotten and the increased PR, we did spend fifty-seven thousand dollars. Our budget is spent. We do not want to have to ever stop giving assistance to fire clients. But we do, we are in a deficit budget and we do need some assistance. We, when you get a mail drop in the, uh, mail, please send us a donation. It really does go to help those clients. In January alone of this year, we spent ten thousand dollars for direct assistance to fire clients. It's really getting huge. With increased recognition comes increased costs. But we are there and we want to always be there to provide food, clothing, shelter, prescriptions, glasses, dentures, uh, deposits, furniture bedding, all of the stuff that we do on a daily basis. We always want to be there for folks in this county. We have about, um, Andy and I were just talking about twenty-five percent of our volunteers come from Fulton. They're a great group of people. Our disaster team now, which are called DAT members, we have three teams. Uh, when I first started, four years ago, we had five members for the whole county. Now we have twenty-plus and we have several in training. These are people who go out in the middle of the night when it's freezing cold and are there to give a compassionate hand and arm to really, uh, people who are suffering severe trauma. Today, we had a total destroyed in Oswego and Albany Street, and it's just really heartbreaking, um, to see those folks, but it's more heartbreaking to see them not have a compassionate volunteer to get them through. Our goal is to get them back to their pre-disaster condition. Takes a lot of work. We just don't stop. When we go to the fire, we provide follow-up assistance. Some cases are open for several months. So I really want to say thank you today to all the wonderful volunteers from all of the communities in Oswego County. You really should be proud. Even Onadoga, my counterpart, has only two disaster action teams. We have three, on the verge of four. So we should really be proud. And we've also trained about thirty-seven people in mass care. So if we did have to open shelters here, we have about thirty-seven people trained in order to do that. It takes twenty-four volunteers a day to keep a shelter going. So if any of you have extra time and want to become disaster action volunteers, learn to drive our IRV, our emergency response vehicle, or become a CPR first aid instructor, we would love to have them. Thank you very much.
Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Carol. While you're asking, I just dug up my visual aid. You might ask everybody to get one of these to a blood donut, you might ask everybody to get one of these to a blood donut card.
Great, everyone can get them.
I have mine. Where's yours, Bob?
Yep, every fifty-six days.
I'm sure it's in my wallet. I'm sure it is too.
Right here.
See? You can see all the customers I'm getting for you here?
Every fifty-six days you can give life. It is the gift of life. One time. They are experimenting with new ways of making the blood.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks to all the volunteers, for all the work that they do.
I don't want to talk to you, Joe. Fire department, anyone, to anyone, to all of them. Stay in touch.
Boy, isn't it terrible?
Chief.
Resolved the minutes of council meeting February fourth, two thousand and three are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Kenneth Pittman, Junior, Sixty South Pollard Drive. The Fulton Planning Commission effective February fifteenth, two thousand and three, to expire February fourteenth, two thousand and six, is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of El Gideo Farini, Six Fifteen A, West Fourth Street, Fulton, New York. Fulton Planning Commission effective February fifteenth, two thousand and three, to expire February fourteenth, two thousand and six, is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Charles Zesaski, Ninety Ridge Road, Fulton, New York, to the Lake Neontawana Shoreline Development Committee, fill the expired term of James Crane, effective February sixth, two thousand and three, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five, is entered into the minutes of this council meeting as a matter of record.
Next item.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Sean Fagin, Fifty-Nine West Fourth Street, Fulton, New York, City of Torian, effective immediately and to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and three, is hereby entered into the minutes of this council meeting of February, of March fourth, two thousand and three, as a matter of record.
Next item.
Whereas the common council at their meeting on December third referred a right-of-way proposal submitted by Deborah Smith, Ten North Fourth Street, to establish a second driveway for tenant parking at the above address. Whereas Fulton Planning Commission at their meeting of February tenth approved the right-of-way request submitted by Deborah Smith for the following stipulations. One, that the curb cut required for a second driveway be approved and overseen by the city DPW, and that it meets the requirements specified in city code. Whereas Planning Commission has referred the right-of-way request to the council for their action. Be it resolved that the clerk is hereby authorized, directed, to advertise for public hearing, held on Tuesday, March eighteenth, at two thousand and three, at seven P.M. in the council chambers, relative to this right-of-way request.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the Chamberlain be authorized to increase revenue account F twenty-seven oh one in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, the prior year refund, and increase expense account F eighty-three twenty point four four zero one in the same amount, said amount as a refund from Niagara Mohawk as a result from outside consulting service provided by Control, Cost Control Associates, which will be paid the same amount as part of their commission.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas Fire Department applied for and received a grant from FEMA in the amount of twenty, or seventy-two thousand, something hundred and ninety-six dollars. Whereas the city sheriff said grant is seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city Chamberlain be authorized and directed to make the appropriate transfers as follows. Increase revenue A forty-nine sixty, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. Transfer seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars from contingent account to A thirty-four eleven FEMA account. Appropriate eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars into the A thirty-four one-two account. Forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars into the A thirty-four eleven point two zero 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 account. Appropriate six thousand dollars into the A thirty-four eleven point four seven seven oh FEMA account for a total of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved the mayor be authorized to sign the agreements between A L Lee Memorial Hospital and City of Fulton for one physical examining, examination agreement, respiratory fitness agreement, breath alcohol testing agreement, NIDA drug testing agreement, medical review officer services agreement.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the EAP's Employee Assistance Program Agreement with Oswego Hospital.
Mayor, are, are these two, is this something that Lee Memorial cannot provide?
These are, these are continuing, we, we've, we've split in the past with the EAP coming out of that, uh, out of Oswego because they offer that. I don't believe...
Because I remember when Ed Garrel was here, wasn't there a big stink about?
The other one's...
That, that was, that was the other that we just did for Lee. So all of that is being done at Lee. The only thing that's been done in Oswego is the EAP program, and I don't believe...
They don't have, they don't have a program at Lee Memorial.
I don't believe so.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the annual agreement with the City of Oswego and the City of Fulton to provide shelter services for the City of Fulton.
Can I ask a question on this one too?
Yes.
Says adoption fees, dogs, a hundred and thirty-one dollars, cats, ninety-six dollars. If I want to adopt a dog, I pay a hundred and thirty-one dollars?
Yes.
No wonder they don't get rid of them.
Yes.
And who's gonna, who in their right mind is gonna pay ninety-six bucks to adopt a cat?
There are some people that really appreciate cats.
I mean, really. Ninety-six dollars, we can get free kittens in the Valley News all day.
Yeah, a lot of the streets do.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't it make more sense that they can get rid of them if, if there was like a ten dollar donation or a twenty dollar, I mean, a hundred and thirty-one dollars to adopt a dog? That's not adoption, that's extortion.
That, that is, I believe that is to recover the fees that they have to, uh, charge or the, the, uh, the expenses they have while they're housing animals.
Well, if you didn't have to pay anything to get rid of them, they wouldn't have to house them for so long.
I understand that. I, I'm just...
It just doesn't make sense to me that you'd have to pay a hundred bucks to adopt a cat.
The City of Oswego sets the rates and, and, uh, we, uh, we don't have a, a shelter, so we have to, uh, to, uh, go elsewhere for shelter services. It is required.
Right.
All right.
And this is actually cheaper than having a shelter ourselves.
Yeah, it is.
I know that very well.
We've looked at that before.
Do I hear a motion?
I guess I'm heard. Sure, I'm in.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Sealed bids were received on Friday, February fourteenth regarding new carpeting for the upstairs of the municipal building. Whereas one bid was received by Onadoga Carpet, the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Whereas Ryan Alidick of Fulton Engineering, for his letter, March third, a copy of which is attached, has stated that he has reviewed the sole bid of Onadoga Carpets in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, and has recommended the council award said bid to Onadoga Carpets in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Be it resolved that the bid of Onadoga Carpets in the amount of twenty-five thou, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars is hereby received and awarded to Onadoga Carpets in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Question? Question.
Do, do we send out notices to all the companies that could bid on this?
Yes, it was advertised.
Advertised.
Is it just this room?
No.
I was gonna say, twenty-three grand's an awful lot of money for this much carpet.
Judges' chamber.
Court, court's paying for it, state's paying for it.
Regardless of who's paying for it, that's a lot of money for carpet.
A lot of rooms.
Second floor. Not the hallway, no, not the heavy travel hallway.
How soon can they put the carpeting in?
They are, uh, going to do that the weekend of the fourteen-fifteenth.
A few to a house, a couple grand.
Bringing that neighborhood, we should, should have it done within, but it has to be done by the end of this month.
Okay.
A few of the states oversee this, quite, quite, uh, wide groups, so I don't think they were just...
It is within, it was within the parameters set by the state.
Guess I should go to carpet builders.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, uh, the discussion items, we have Greg Peddle. Would you care to come forward? He, uh, has information in regards to the webpage of Digital Topath.
Thanks, thanks. Greg, I can hand him out. Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Gregory Peddle, and I'm the president of Northern Publishing. I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you may have about the Digital Topath project. Just to give you a very short background, Digital Topath is a web-based tool that allows communities to show their information to, uh, the, the people within their, their community and others who would visit them. You're able to see all of the services, the attractions, uh, real estate and community development resources that are available. Uh, it serves as, uh, a way of collecting all of the information and presenting it to members of your community. You can look up telephone numbers, just about anything that you want. What's special about it as a website is not that all this thing, all these things are available on the web, but that they are easy to maintain for the community, for the, uh, the, the folks in government who are tasked with doing this. Because most of the people who have the job of getting this information together are not webmasters, they're not software developers, they're people who have many other things to do during their day. And so this tool, uh, is provided to communities throughout the state. We have a, a very low-cost membership program, and we're seeking to expand the number of communities who are participating. Right now, there are seventy throughout New York State, and we're, uh, meeting with you tonight to, to talk about the possibilities and, uh, answer any questions that you have. How many folks here have, uh, used Hotmail before? Seen it on the world wide web, you can send email? How many folks have ever done any shopping online? Purchased anything? Okay. You're familiar then with seeing forms where you type in your information, you fill out maybe your telephone number or something like that? If you can do those kinds of things on the web, then you would understand the level of difficulty that's involved for somebody in the community, uh, who has to maintain these things. They don't have to be a programmer, you can, simply using our tool, you can simply click into an interface and fill out the form. I need to change the phone number for the commissioner of parks. You get in there and you edit it, you don't have to, uh, to be a programmer. Uh, I don't have a demonstration to show you, uh, with me, but my understanding was that some of you had a chance to see this before. But, uh, essentially, we're here to, uh, to answer any questions that you have and to tell you about the, the bright future that this has for communities throughout New York State.
And the, uh, the cost that you show here at, at forty-five dollars a month, actually that, part of that, we are, will replace the fee that we're already paying.
I'm not familiar with what you're already paying, but for that price, the, uh, community receives access to the software tool and hosting of their domain name and limited amount of email usage.
That, that was the...
Yes.
Includes the host fee.
Yes.
Which we are now paying separately.
Yeah, we're paying separately on that, so that would eliminate that.
You'd be able to redirect that money towards paying this fee, yes.
Yeah, so we're, we're paying part of this already. The, uh, presentation that, uh, Mr. Buller did was, was, was very good. I saw that, uh, I, I think it is, uh, a tool that we could use and, and would definitely be helpful due to the lack of personnel, personnel hours that we have to, uh, to dedicate to the webpage. I think this will make it a lot easier and, and put the information out there, uh, for the public, a lot better than, than what we have right now, and, as you said, easier to maintain.
That's the thing that I hear most often when I speak to people in the communities is that they have a website, but it's old. They have the information online, but some guy who's gone to college now was the one who's responsible for it, and nobody's done anything with it in the last two years. And the, uh, the thing that, one of the things that we're most excited about this program is that it doesn't take a rocket science degree, you get in there and, and maintain it. And so folks who have other responsibilities in their day can, can also have this as, as something to do that doesn't take up their whole day, it doesn't turn into a full-time job. It's just something where you go and you edit it like you would edit a document. You save it, and you're done.
And Craig, this, as I understand it, this is set up specifically for municipalities in, in New York State, is that correct?
That is correct. The history of the program is that Niagara Mohawk sponsored originally a group of twelve small communities in the Oneida, uh, region, and they have, uh, worked with us and, and asked us to support and carry the program forward on their behalf. They are no longer managing it, uh, we're now, uh, doing that for them. Our mandate is to, to, uh, take this out to as many communities as we can.
Anyone have any, uh, any further questions?
City of Oswego is using this?
Yes, they are.
I'd like to suggest, uh, Mayor, if we could get this on the agenda for next meeting, uh, as a resolution to, uh, to move forward with this.
Contract?
Yes.
Sure.
I think it has a lot of potential, and, and do you have a specific contract that we need to, uh...
Yes, we do. We have what's called a memorandum of understanding, and, and I can have that delivered to members who receive it.
Send it to my office. I'll take care of that.
What do we get besides, uh, a hosting webpage design? Is that basically what we're buying? Is a hosting page design?
We'd be hosting, uh, you have the hosting of the domain name, you have the, uh, the software tool that allows you to manage information in one of twenty or thirty different categories. So for example, when you have information about parks and recreation, you can go to the forum and fill out all of the information, talk about your parks, upload the photos of the parks, and, and do that without being a really technical person. If you filled out that part of the website, then it will appear on your website. If you'd like to take a look at some other sites, there, you can go visit digitaltopath.com, and it's a list of other communities who are participating. You can see that the, the communities, uh, are all, you know, they're different in the, the kinds of information that they upload. They have, some of them have spent a lot of time getting photos up there, and some of them have a lot, spent a lot of time putting up the history of their region or talking about the tourism. Many of the communities use a section for uploading the minutes from all their public meetings, so that those things are available online to the citizens. There are a lot of, uh, ideas that we have going forward for how to expand this service, but the, the basic offering that we have right now, I think, is very, very capable, and there's a, a lot of folks using it that way.
Who would, uh, for lack of a better phrase, who, who would do the data entry? Each, each individual department head would enter their own stuff into their own link on the site, I mean, is that basically how it would work?
We'll be able to control who, who enters it. So it, it, it's best not to have too many people entering, but we could, we could control that, but it's easy enough where it's not gonna take a full-time person.
It's not gonna be City of Fulton folks not...
No, it would not be, it would not be our, our, it would be, uh, actually something that you have complete control over, uh, the content, the timing.
There's difference between control and actually entering.
Everything's up to you when you want to fill out the forms, and, and as soon as you, uh, do, then that information's available to, uh, to be seen on the website.
But you provide technical assistance if needed.
Yes, technical assistance and training is included in the program for whoever you designate to, uh, to, to operate the site.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good product, and I, I think it will be very helpful to us.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
Next on the agenda, we have an update regarding the Fulton Tourism Center.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you, uh, this evening. I'm Mike Body, and I'm one of the investors in the concession at Bullhead Point, uh, here to give you a little progress report of last year's operation. I'm here with my partners, uh, Tom Lichardell and Don LaBarge. Um, I'd like to review a little bit of the history of the project and then report on last summer's operation, give you some ideas of some things we're doing for, uh, for the future. When we first got together, uh, right after we signed the agreement, we asked about who would be the liaison between us and the city, and, um, Mayor Stafford suggested it be Barry Ostrander at that time, Recreation Department, and that's kind of where all of our information's been going through. And, uh, although I have talked to a couple of the aldermen in between and the mayor, um, we thought that maybe this would be a, a more appropriate way to bring people up to date, so after talking with the mayor and, uh, Alderman West and Alderman Thompson, we thought it might be a nice idea to do it this way. I don't know how, I know you have business relations with other, with other groups, the ICE Community Center and, uh, I think the concession with the food concession for the, um, softball people. I don't know how they report to you, but, so if there's a different format in this, then we'll do it a different way, but for now, um, this is, I, we thought this would be kind of a, a good way to do it. Last year, a lot of things were, were written in the newspaper about this, about our relationship here, and, uh, the city took, took, uh, quite a few hits from people, letters to the editor, and so did we. And, uh, you all know and we know that most of those things weren't true, and, and I want to take this opportunity to correct some of those inaccuracies. As you remember, there is, there is a shoreline development plan for Lake Neontawana, and a real brief, real brief history of that. That plan was developed by a group of landscape architects from Syracuse University. The architectural group was headed by a man named Doug... The architectural group was headed by a man named Dudley Breed and his group was called Landscape and Prospect. They presented, uh, they presented a shoreline development plan for the Lake Nianuwana Reclamation Committee, who in turn presented it to, to the city. Um, now, it was presented to the public, it was presented twice back in this room. The first time it was presented to get ideas and comments on the draft of that plan and then it was, uh, presented in its final, uh, document form. And, uh, and that plan was, was, was approved by resolution of the common council and has been in, in place for, for the last six years. Now, I'm not going to go through every detail of that plan, we'll be here all night, but the highlights of that plan basically call for the development of a conference center at North Bay, an upgrade of the campgrounds at North Bay, a pavilion at Bullhead Point, an amphitheater at Stevenson's Beach and two restaurants. And I'm going to use the word restaurant, I know last year that became a point of, you know, contention, but I'm going to use it anyway. So, yeah, two restaurants, an upscale restaurant at the foot of Broadway and a fast-service style restaurant between the YMCA and Bullhead Point Pavilion. All of those facilities I mentioned were designed to draw people into our community and specifically to the lake shore. The intent was to raise awareness and environmental needs of our lake. Each part of the development was intended to be self-sufficient and privatized wherever feasible. Now, that, that is brought out in the marketing and engineering study which was done by CT Mail and, and Knowledge Systems and Research. The, uh, the idea is to develop a plan or to develop these different entities that could support themselves and at the same time draw people in and draw money into the, into the community. The Bullard administration initiated the, the development of the plan with the construction of the pavilion at Bullhead Point. And to take full advantage of the tourism potential of this pavilion, there needed to be restroom facilities at the site. Stafford administration took this step and built the tourism building to house the restrooms. By adding the concession area, the, um, the pavilion and all of Bullhead Point becomes open to a full range of functions, which you will see is what evolved this last summer. From Memorial Day to Labor Day, there was some sort of activity at, at Bullhead Point. It, it, it did everything that, that was, was intended. In addition, by privatizing the concession, the, the city fulfilled the intention of the shoreline development plan, established a fast-service restaurant at that particular site and do so in a manner that, that, uh, that the project is self-sufficient. Now, how we became involved in the project was this. The city first went to several local business owners and asked them to, to develop the concession, but they were not interested. The city set a bid specifications package and publicly bid the concession and no one submitted a bid. Now, we heard about the concession idea in the summer of two thousand and one and we also heard that nobody was interested in the project. Tom and Don and I were looking at a different investment opportunity altogether and then I asked them to consider this one instead. And, uh, some, some days, I'm wondering whether they, anyway. I knew, I, uh, I, I knew the importance of developing the shoreline here and, and, uh, I, I asked them if they would consider this as, as the one that we would, would look at. We asked the city permission to submit a management proposal. In fact, we prepared a management proposal, submitted it to the city. But it's, the city, in order to be as fair as they could and to be sure that all interested parties would have an equal opportunity, did not accept our management proposal. Where's the guys in the press? Right here? Did not accept our management proposal. Instead, they decided to bid the project second time. We submitted the only bid. It can't be more fair than to offer somebody an opportunity three times. When we visited the tourism building, in the kitchen, there was a fire suppression exhaust system in place sufficient for five fries, definitely not five, five units or whatever, five, a stainless steel sink and a grease trap, and that's it. Painting the kitchen, all the kitchen equipment, all the restaurant tables and chairs, all the signs, all the lighting, all the sound system, the decorations, cabinets, rugs and all necessary renovations were paid for by us, not the city. The city did not subsidize the project. You guys got that? City did not subsidize the project. I think it's important. These guys took a beating last year for no reason at all. They, they didn't seem to do anything. Even though it wasn't directly our responsibility, we installed a high-intensity light on the service pole near the entrance of the parking lot. One night, um, there was an elderly gentleman down near the pavilion and he tried to get out of the parking lot and he drove, he drove directly into the ditch. He didn't even get close to, to the, uh, to the, uh-
Right, right. Same though.
Yeah. So, we thought, maybe we ought to put something down here. And I went to the mayor and said, you know, we'd be willing to put the light up at our expense if you guys didn't mind. We put a light, we, we put a, we put a timer and an electric eye on the light. We knew you guys were paying the utilities, we didn't want you to pay anymore than you had to. It came out of our pocket to do it, but we thought it would be, would be, would be good for all of us, so we put, put that up and with the timer. We also had the electricians install the wiring for the fan that you now have in the cupola there. They were in there doing work for us anyway, so we thought, we'll kick in a few extra bucks and we'll do that for you. Now, as I said, the kitchen was empty of equipment except for this exhaust system and, and the grease trap. But it made it pretty clear to us what kind of concession was intended here. I, I know people wrote in the paper last year, they didn't know what they were going to be allowed to do, but, you know, a hood, you know, ventilated hood and a grease trap, it pretty, makes it pretty clear. And even if they didn't know, you could have done what we did, which was you could ask. So, so, uh, I, I don't think the city needs to take the blame for people not understanding what they could or couldn't do there. It was pretty, pretty clear. In our contract, we agreed to keep the restrooms at the tourism building clean. And I know people wondered how much money this would, this agreement would save the city. Now, I checked with the city's Recreation Superintendent and he says that the savings was at a minimum, minimum of thirteen thousand dollars a year. That's about thousand, a little over a thousand dollars a month. Now, for people who haven't been in the tourism building, this is not just a little toilet and sink. There are ten toilets and ten sinks. And our crews clean those twice a day, every day, seven days a week and in between, when there's, when there's more of a, more of a mess. So, it's not, it's not a simple little job. This is, this is a significant, this is a significant thing. In addition, on Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights, um, we, we found out that some people had complained because, very early in the year, because the, uh, the big pavilion wasn't being cleaned. There's no, there's no, there's no crew, there's no city crew to do it. So, we just had our people do it. On Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights, we have our people go in there, they pick up the trash and they dispose it and that's, that's at our expense, not your expense. Uh, we, we thought, it's not in our contract to do it, we just thought that it would be a, it would be a nice thing to keep the area looking nice. But it's, it is a savings to the city as well. Someone wrote in the paper whether or not there were signs indicating public restrooms at the tourism center. There are, I don't know why they said that. There are signs, there have been signs. The city put them up and they, they've been there all along. I, I don't know when they put them up exactly, but they are there in case anybody asks you. There was also complaint about surfacing the parking lots. I know the, I know the mayor, um, took a lot of heat for that personally, didn't you? Let me tell you how this, let me tell you about the parking lots being surfaced. I can tell you about this personally because when the pavilion went up, uh, Don Bullard asked me if there was some way that we could get the area landscaped. And so, in order to do that, because of, because of its location, proximity to, to the road and to the lake, we have to have permitting from the DEC and DOT. So, six years ago, I applied for those permits for the cit- I did that myself. So, the surfacing of the parking lots was, was planned and underway six years ago, long before there was the tourism building. The city did not, did not pay this parking lot for the concession. It was, it was planned long before that. The money came along later, but it was planned for, for then.
That was part of the, the grant that, that funded the, uh, the pier?
Mm-hmm.
And the parking lot, yes.
Yeah. I, I didn't, I don't know where the funding came from because I wasn't involved in at that point, but the plan for it and the permitting for all of it was started years and years ago. Snow removal, that was another one. People wrote in the paper about people, you know, the city plowing the snow. That, that's an emergency snow parking area and has been for, I, I don't know how many, forever as long as I can remember. Had nothing to do with the pavilion or the tourism, tourism center at all. Vendors, vendors. I, I saw the, uh, I saw the videotape at one of the meetings. I know Alderman Woodward and Alderman Cavalero were concerned about, about the vending issue. So, let me explain it a little bit. This is, this is important. First of all, our contract had a provision in it to protect the vendor who was already there. Shannon's Hot Dog's been there for, I forget, seventeen, sixteen, seventeen years.
Eighty-six, nineteen eighty-six.
That was our idea. We asked if that be put in there. I know, okay? People try to spin these things, but I'm telling you, we asked if that be put in there. And, and, uh, you know, they, they paid their dues, they had, we didn't want to cause trouble and that was fine. So, so, uh, we thought they ought to be there and be allowed to stay. We did however ask for some restrictions on the other vendors. Being good in business, you know, it, it, you try to anticipate things that are going to happen to you and you try to avoid them. Let me give you an idea of some of the things that did happen and you'll understand why we tried to, why we threw over these restrictions. From our first day of operation, we had people come in and try and spy on us. We had people come in and deliberately try to create situations where we, where we would be in some code or some legal violations. Now, we found out about it and we avoided those things. Mr. LaBarge had an employee that was harassed. Our customers were harassed and our suppliers were threatened. Now, would you want somebody like that vending right under your nose? I mean, we're not, you know, we're not the brightest guys in the world, but we can figure this out. We don't, you don't want that to happen. We, essentially, we did not want a vending permit to become a, a license to continue harassment. We just didn't want it. And you have to protect yourself. Additionally, we are financially obligated to the city by contract. It would be, it would be, it would be poor form for the city to expect us to fulfill our financial obligations while at the same time inviting another vendor to come in who would deliberately try to undermine our abilities to fulfill, fulfill the contract. That wouldn't be right. Now, now, we, we know most of you guys and we, we understand, we could have had some, you know, gentleman's agreement, non-contractual type of agreement. But you guys are all politicians, you know, the complexion of the council could change in an election pool and it could be all different people up here. We had to have a contract that was going to, in fact, it doesn't matter who's sitting up here. The fact that we all might agree to something doesn't mean that the next bunch of guys are going to agree to it. You have to have it this way. And we, we, unfortunately, we, we, uh, we felt we needed to protect ourselves that way and that's why it was written like it was. Um, now, now, those are some ugly things. Let's, let's forget the ugly things. Let's talk about some better things, all right? Let's talk about some, some nice ones. First one doesn't sound like some nicer things, but it'll turn out that way. Utility costs during the months of our operation were about nine thousand dollars. Eleven thousand something for the entire year. We weren't in there for the whole year, but you could call, if you want to call it the whole year, eleven thousand for the year, but nine thousand for the time that we were there. The rent was, uh, eighty-five hundred bucks. Sales ta- I'm not going to tell you the sales tax, but I'll, we'll tell you this, the sales tax alone offset your utility costs. Labor cost savings to the city were at a minimum of thirteen thousand dollars a year. I say that because, because I was told and I, and I can't, I can't, I can't verify any of this, but, but I, but I went through, again, through the Recreation Superintendent since he's our, he's our liaison, like I said. He said by us being there that they were eliminating, he was able to eliminate from the budget one permanent part-time position at twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So, you either save twenty-five thousand dollars a year or you save thirteen thousand dollars a year. But let's say at a minimum, you save thirteen thousand dollars a year. So, if you put all that together, if you put together the, 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 the sales tax, the, the rent and the savings to the city, it comes to about thirty thousand dollars. So, for roughly an eleven thousand dollar investment, you got a thirty thousand dollar return. And that's, that's not too bad. And that's just the first year of operation, that's just the first year we were there. So, so I, I, I think you did pretty well. You're about nineteen thousand dollars ahead, no matter how you look at it. In addition, um, we created, uh, twelve seasonal jobs. We had a payroll of over fifty thousand dollars. That's not bad for, for, for kids going to college, you know? That's, that's, that's tuition money. That's, I think that's pretty good. Most important, most, what we're most proud of, we drew an approximately seventy-two thousand visitors to that tourism center. Seventy-two thousand in the first year. Could, could have been, could have been more because, because, uh, the way we do it is, is by calculating off of the cash register at sales. People who came in and just used the bathroom who went to the tourism, gift shop and all that, that, they're not, they're not in that number, so it could have been more. And they don't count, you know, people who just came to fish and walk around and walk out on the pier and stuff and those type of things. I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at it, but the, the, in the gift shop, the, the senior citizens had a, um, log. People wrote in. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that. Did you look at that? The compliments about the whole project on it, I'm not just talking about us, and we were very proud because a lot of it dealt with the food and the service and all that stuff. But you guys should be proud of these people wrote very, very nice things. If you haven't seen it, you ought to look at it. It's really, it's really, really impressive. And these people were from out of town, they were from all over the place. I, I know that in our, in the paper it says, yeah, yeah. One person said, well, he didn't believe that if, in the concept of if you build it, they will come. Well, you built it, it, they came. You guys did a great job and, and you should be proud of it. I'm going to stop here and ask, uh, I got just a few remarks I want to wind up with here, but, but, um, does anybody have any questions of us or you guys?
Yep. Do you guys have any, uh, like, like, the, 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 the city?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go into some of the future activities in the center here if you want. You guys have any questions of us or?
Either you call us or we'll answer.
Uh, somebody's got to have some. Questions at all? All right. Okay. You want to get some basketball game, right? Okay, here we go.
You read between the lines.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I hate to do this. Okay. As you know, the state and federal government have designated the Great Canal as an important segment of, of the developing tourism industry in New York State. They're looking for communities along the canal to participate in this development and Fulton has a shoreline development plan for Lake Nianuwana in place and has begun the first stages of implementation. The plan is recognized at the state level and in fact, the implementation was initiated with state funds. Fulton is about to receive federal funds for the environmental aspect of the plan. And, and, and I think it's really important to, to understand it, that, uh, for the past few years, we have been, I went, I went to Washington myself, uh, two summers ago to talk to Congressman McHugh, brought him all the information on what was going on at this area. The fact that we're getting these, some of these funds is, is the fact that we've, we've, you know, you've got a really good project going here and you've got a plan and most important thing is a plan. So, you're about to receive federal funds for the environmental aspects of the plan, so you're recognized at the federal level as well. I don't think you could be in a better position politically than that. Recognized at both the state and the federal level, that's, that's terrific. You've developed a prototype business relationship with us as an example of how the public and private sectors can work together so that even in difficult economic times, the city can move ahead. I have a copy of the city of Fulton comprehensive plan. This was developed by Saratoga Associates and on page, section four, page seventeen, under action steps, develop, model, public and private partnerships and they list examples of projects that could benefit from public and private partnerships, development of the Bullhead Point area. So, so it's not just us to see the, the potential here, there, there are a lot of people who see the potential of this. Next week, I believe the city is about to open discussions with Coca-Cola regarding the development of the Performing Arts Center. Their participation in this project will give the community a connection to a nationally-known product at a national level. And of course, there's, there's, there's the potential of linking this development to, I'm sure it's Destiny USA, which is just up the road, that'd be terrific if that took place and somehow we could piggyback of that. I think by taking small, deliberate, well-thought-out steps that follow a comprehensive plan, you have put our community in a very good position. have put our community in a very good position. We should be proud of these accomplishments, and we should, and should be commended for it, and certainly not criticized as you would. I refer to this plan again on section five, page ten. Action plans, continued implementation of Lake Nianawana. Glad to see these people recognize your, your framework. When two or three people begin to whine, we'd like you to remember that seventy-two thousand people gave you their approval. We're pleased and proud of them to be part of this endeavor with the city, and we look forward to a long and prosperous relationship with Fulton's. If you guys have some questions regarding the future, we do have a couple of things that we're going, we're... One thing we did, this, I know this is a touchy subject, but one of the things we did is February first, the YMCA held a fishing derby down there, so just as a travel, we went ahead with our initials, beer sales down there, to see how it would go. There was no, there was no trouble, everything was smooth with that. We're very pleased that that went that well. I, earlier in the year, I had talked to, to some people from Onondaga Park, they have the carriage rides, horse-drawn carriage rides. We thought that might be something nice and see if we could develop along that path that goes down, down in towards, towards, towards the lake. We were a little concerned, because at that time, we were quite sure where our contract was going to stand, so I couldn't make a commitment at that point, but that's something we'd like to do later on. We talked about maybe some carriage rides or something like that down in there, in the farm, things like that. So it is possible, it is possible. We, we are, we are, let's see, trying to think of some other things. Well, some simple stuff, we'd like to do something kind of unique with the, with, we're trying to develop an area like The Loop. For those people who are sensitive about the beer sales and all that, we're not trying to make this a bar, we're trying to develop it like you, when you go to The Loop, you go there, you buy a fist sandwich and a beer. That's all, all our intention is. We've talked to some bands, as a matter of fact, I, this past Wednesday, I spoke to a fellow from the band out of Rochester, he's going to send me a CD, we're going to try to get some, some entertainment in there. I don't know if you fellows have been down there, I know some of you guys have been down there on weekends, and it's, it's a great deal of fun. On Memorial Day, Memorial Day, you couldn't have, you couldn't have written a movie script better than this. There were lots and lots of people in the area, lots of people around the parking lot walking around, on the pavilion, out on the pier, and they turned off the lights at the, at the softball field to do the fireworks display, and as they did that, the moon broke out. You couldn't have planned this, and it just shone across the whole lake, and they started the fireworks display, and people were just standing on the pier cheering, it was, music was playing, we had people lining up for ice cream and stuff. It was, it was right out of a movie, no doubt. A lot of people started to come down there, a lot of people had come down with their old, with their old cars and stuff. I know people were concerned about that. I'll tell you how that developed, so that you can understand this. We had one fellow come from a car club from Hannibal, and he, it came because the place that he used to go to, I'm not going to say any places, but the place he used to go to, the fellow asked them not to come there anymore, because he, their cars weren't all complete, and he only wanted cars that were all fixed up. Now, I don't, I'm not a car person, but these guys who work on these cars are pretty proud of what they do, and they want to, they want to display them, so, so they asked if they could come down, and frankly, we told them, well, we don't own the parking lot, but you're welcome to come to our business, but we don't, we can't give you permission to do anything else. Well, they came down, and a few weeks later, another group of our fellows came down, and one of the, the president of that club came up to us and said, the place where he used to go to, the fellow there, they called him some names and called the guys in the club names, and he didn't want to go there anymore. And would it be all right to come down here with this other car club? Now, again, we don't have, we told them, we don't, can't give you permission to come here, but if you want to come, that's up to you. So little by little, I mean, if you're nice to people and people are having a good time, we had some fellow that had a band called Barry Ostrander and asked if he could play at the, if their band could practice at the pavilion a couple of nights.